Good evening, welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, February 11th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh Canada." Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons come out. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir alumni for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. councillor Thiessen.
Thank you Mayor Given, I would move that council approve the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, January 28th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen. Are there any errors or omissions, any things that we need to correct before we formally adopt those minutes? I don't see anybody ringing in or waving their arms, so I guess there must not be. We'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes, please. Thank you. That motion carries and a motion to adopt the agenda as presented councillor O'Toole.
Mayor Given, I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for anyone in the community to come and address council on any community-related matter. We typically ask presentations to let us know in advance if they would like to present to council. And we had one this evening, Mr Durnford, with respect to snow removal, that let us know that he wished to come. So, Mr Durnford, if that's you in the back corner there, come on up to the front here and make yourself welcome. Thanks so much. We appreciate you being here tonight and letting us know ahead of time that you wish to be here. Council, have a seat and please be comfortable. Council did receive the map and some photos that you presented, so we have those sort of all around the table here in front of us.
Good evening everyone.
And Roger, if you could, sorry to throw you off, yeah, maybe just point it so it's a little bit closer towards your mouth there. And other than that, it's pretty sensitive, it should pick you up.
Okay, so, I guess I'm gonna apologize for taking you guys' time, this is pretty trivial, I think, in the city's snow removal. But anyway, I've lived in that area right behind the Eastling Centre for the last 18 years. And we have a little path, if you notice that, I have a red arrow there. And it connects to the pathway that goes around the Knowledge, the Eastling Centre, and what I think is called Knowledge Way. So, over the last, well, since my kids started going to high school, I guess, in maybe 10 years, I have phoned, actually my backup step. No one wants to clear that path, okay, so I phone, sometimes it gets cleared and sometimes it don't. If you look at the picture that I have here, what I used to do, I don't have a snow blower anymore, I would go over and I'd run my snow blower through it, right? And now another guy's or woman's taken up that clearance for the kids going to school, so. I really don't have much to say, I would just like to ask, maybe we could put it on the snow removal area. I mean, they do the whole path around the Coke Centre and the Eastling Centre, but for whatever reason, they seem to neglect this area, so. I really don't have much more to say, I'd just like to see it get done.
Absolutely, you know, we appreciate you taking the opportunity to come and see us and let us know. Not every resident takes the opportunity to come and let us know when there's something that they think could be addressed. And maybe you just want to speak to the second picture, there's another picture that we have that looks like an area that's better cleared.
Yes, and that's actually the, sorry, that's actually the main path that goes around. And, but anyway, I mean, I've been phoning often enough over the years that I think I've been probably bothering the person answering the phone. And they had suggested that I, that I maybe move it up. I was actually gonna meet with you and they said, no, just go to the council meeting, so, anyway, that's all I had to say about that.
No, absolutely, we're happy to have you here and appreciate you raising the issue. So our typical process when something comes via public delegation is we would refer to administration to be able to go and find the details and report back to our appropriate standing committee. But you can rest assured that you've started the process or a process where council will find out more about it. We also make sure that there's an opportunity if council members have questions, so if there's something that they want to see clarification. So you're not out of the hot seat yet, I guess.
Oh, okay.
But just so you know what sort of a reasonable expectation is tonight, probably we would ask our staff to find some information and bring it back to a committee. And follow up with you on that. I see councillor Bressi has a question for you, councillor Bressi?
Great, thank you, thank you Mayor Given, thanks for coming in. So, I don't actually spend a lot of time walking this area, usually living on the other side of the city, I drive to the area and then I walk over. So just so I understand, you're saying there's already a pedestrian path there that's getting cleared and you think that that one's getting cleared fine, you're just hoping this little connection gets the same treatment.
Yeah, I live in a cul-de-sac where the red arrow, actually on opposite end of the red arrow, I guess on the north side. And so it's a city-owned trail, it's paved, right, in the summertime, they do a good job mowing the sides. Snow removal, they do a great job going around the Eastling Centre, which encompasses St Joe's, Coke Centre, Eastling and further on. But for some reason, it doesn't, they don't seem to want to plow that. But I must say, they did plow it after I phoned last week.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, and just so I can clarify, the thing that they're doing around the Eastling Centre, that's a pedestrian path that's.
That's correct, yeah, and that's another pedestrian path, it just goes to the cul-de-sac.
Thank you. I see councillor Clayton had a question as well.
Probably my question is better for administration, but I'll ask you just from my own knowledge, is the path, I'm assuming the path, the perimeter path is being done by a machine?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks councillor Clayton. So I don't see anybody else in the queue for you, Mr Durnford. So our delegation business comes up actually towards the very end of our agenda before we adjourn. And as I said, the most likely outcome there would be we would refer this matter to administration for a report back to council. But rest assured, you've got it in front of us and we'll follow up on it.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So, as I mentioned at the outset, this delegation portion of our agenda is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward, address council on any community-related matter. We do appreciate it, as I said, if you let us know in advance when you're coming. But it is just one of the ways that you can contact city council, of course, many of us are on social media, we absolutely have email addresses, phone calls, meetings. Just about everybody on council is ready to take somebody out in the community for coffee if we're ever asked. Not that I'm looking for coffee dates, but in addition to that, of course, we also have the citizen contact centre, which residents can call for service concerns or questions as well. I don't see anybody else here this evening for the delegation portion of our agenda, so we'll close that and we'll move on. We also have no public hearings and no unfinished business, so that'll take us to item 8.1 under reports. And we have a presentation of a new promotional video from Economic Development. And I see Ms Lee there, are you gonna make an introduction to it, Rebecca?
Thank you Mayor Given, this is a project that we've been working on for the past year, a year and a little bit more. It was an opportunity for us to showcase some of the amenities and lifestyle in Grand Prairie. The Economic Development Team uses this, is planning on using this promotional video for investment attraction opportunities, but then also for local companies for, to support their relocation efforts. So we initiated the project back in the fall of 2017, I guess, and through an RFP process, we're very excited to award the contract to a local company, the distillery. We have Chris Bochamps here with me today for the big premiere. We've been working on this since then and we had an initial casting call, went out to community members and we had lots of different family members of the community come out to join in the making of the video. So I know that they're all very excited to see it premiere today, and I'm sure lots of people are watching online. But we're just excited to share it with you, so, without further ado. So that was, that's sort of our main video, as I mentioned, we're using that mainly for investment attraction and more general relocation services, or promotion, I should say. We had the opportunity to, for a bit of a soft launch at a conference out in BC a few weeks ago, and the reception was pretty exciting, people. The comment was, wow, I had no idea Grand Prairie had so much going on and I didn't realize what was happening out there, so it was definitely exciting to share. Second video that we have here is a shorter one and it's more for drilling down into some of those economics statistics that we're sharing and just putting a little bit of the numbers behind some of the statistics or behind the images that we're showing here.
Very cool, thank you for the introduction of those new assets in our repertoire, our tools, as we go out and promote the community. So are those videos in the hands of the department and are they available for use of the community if anybody wanted to share them? Or are they something that somebody would have to come to Economic Development to get a copy of them or a USB stick or something?
We can do, we can help either way, definitely encourage members of the community to help us share and promote. They, as of tonight, they should be live on our YouTube channel, but are also available. They wanted to contact us and we can put them on USB for, get out there, yeah.
That's really great, great, thanks so much, Ms Lee. I don't know if there are any questions for administration on the videos, but certainly a great way to kick them off rather than just sort of bringing them to committee or sending out a media release, but thanks so much for showing them off to us. I don't see anything else, so we'll move on into our committee business, starting with item 9.1, the Community Living Committee Meeting from January 29th, councillor Thiessen.
Thank you Mayor Given, I guess I don't have to request to speak on this one, but I would move that council approve the minutes of the Community Living Committee Meeting held Tuesday, January 29th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen, are there any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to address? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, councillor Thiessen.
Thank you Mayor Given, a couple of motions coming out of this one, both dealing on the same one, around community opioid response recommendations from committee. And to call out the first one, I would move that council endorse the Community Opioid Response Plan and direct the mayor to formally share the plan with other community organizations and invite them to identify how they may contribute to the response recommendations contained in the plan period. So there's another motion that will follow this one, but just speaking to this, it's in everybody's package and it's in the community. We just had our opioid, I guess, documentary and the crisis in Grand Prairie of which we undertake, and I'm sure many communities are feeling the pinch. I just wanna point out to council that it is a good and brief read, but this, despite the fact of being a city-sponsored plan, it is by no way just the cities. Many, many partners took part in the collaborative efforts to put this together from a cross-section of service providers to mental health, law enforcement, school educators, health professionals, the business community and our own council. It does follow the principles of Canada's federal drug strategy, which is a four-pillar approach of prevention, treatment, harm reduction and enforcement. But to fit into our community, we really wanted to stress, or I guess the task force wanted to stress, that in treatment, there is also recovery. And enforcement was, I guess, maybe too broad or too harsh of a term, so they went over to policing councillor Bressi. And I had the opportunity to sit down on the last wordsmithing work of this document and I found it to be a very well-put-together document, a good start. And I feel like it is a living document and it can change over time, because there are some statements that could probably just be crossed off after we find out the answers to them. So I support council, or I recommend council to support this.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Thiessen, any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, councillor Thiessen.
Thank you Mayor Given, so the second motion, I would move that council approve the submission of an Alberta Community Partnership Grant application to support intermunicipal collaboration on opioid response and direct administration to contact other municipalities and invite them to partner with or endorse the city of Grand Prairie on this application. I think the motion is pretty self-explanatory and if there's any questions that someone would like to ask, I'm sure there's many people around this table who could try to answer them.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen, any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, councillor Thiessen, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yeah, there's a few things to highlight, first things first, no council, this all went around through your email last week. But we had a community asset mapping done and presented to committee on the day of. And this was done in partnership with the college and Community Social Development. And it is there to provide a basis for further study and understanding of the landscape and the role of our community organizations and how they could intermingle. So there's a lot of stats that were put in there and hopefully we'll be able to extrapolate those numbers going forward. The other part that I just really wanna talk about is our Director's Service Area Update, which is turning into the highlight of every meeting, because it's where council and the community get to know front-facing what's happening, what happened and what's coming up. I'm just gonna speak a little bit to a few things that are coming up, that were presented in the Director's Service Area. Family Day Marketing Campaign has received its approval on the same place and the development is underway for a great Family Day Weekend this weekend. I'm sure there are activities all over Grand Prairie, as there usually is. Also, in line with that, the final proofs were done for the spring edition of our Community Connections magazine and are in place and production is moving forward. Also, this Thursday is Valentine's Day, so if you haven't got your ticket yet, council, there's a very awesome opportunity for us all to take part in the Passionate Heart Awards Luncheon. It happens every Valentine's Day, it'll be out in the county at, you know, the Intrex Centre there, I think it's called the Terrace Centre now. I'm not sure if that's a name change that I just missed, but that's what it says in my minute package at least. We all know where it is, and this is a day where we get to celebrate all the good, hard-working and caring people of our community, largely from education or social work backgrounds that are making our community the best place to live, work and raise a family and right on the front lines. And so it's a day that we take in to celebrate them over lunch, usually there's entertainment. Last year I was the entertainment, I didn't know that, nobody told me until I got up on stage. But yeah, if you haven't got your ticket yet, please go. Finally, we also had a little bit of movement, planning and design are ongoing for the North Entrance feature to our fair city. So hopefully we'll take a few more steps and we'll have a nice welcoming entrance sign for our residents and out-of-town residents that are coming in to visit Grand Prairie to sparkle them like our promotional video just did. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen, and we'll move on to item 9.2, the Corporate Services Committee Meeting from January 29th, councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much Mayor Given, I'd recommend that council approve the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee Meeting held on Tuesday, January 29th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes, anything we need to change before we adopt them? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you, councillor O'Toole.
I move the council rescind policy 430, which is the drug and alcohol policy, and policy 403, which is the health, wellness and safety policy.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole, any discussion or debate on that motion? Maybe just for context councillor O'Toole, does the city still have any approaches to drug and alcohol or health and wellness and safety? These aren't things we're stopping doing at the city of Grand Prairie, is it?
No, we've had to make some changes because of legislation here in the last little while. And I got Ms Walker, which is the Corporate Services Director, to actually explain in detail.
Sure, that'd be great, Ms Walker? There you go.
There we go, thank you Mayor Given and councillor O'Toole. So, we've done, as councillor O'Toole suggested, we've made some changes to meet new legislation in both of these policies and we've redefined them as management policies.
Okay, thanks very much, so given the operational nature, it made more sense to have them at the management level than at the council level? Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you Mayor Given, excuse me, I'd just like to be clear that we have new policies in place before these ones are rescinded.
Ms Walker?
Thank you Mayor Given, yes, certainly, both of these policies have been rewritten and established as management policies, they're out there now.
Thank you, so the new ones exist, just that council won't see them and won't be in a position of having to approve them or update them as changes are needed, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thanks very much, thanks for the question councillor Blackburn. I don't see anybody else in the queue for discussion or debate, so I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, councillor O'Toole.
I also move the council rescind the following policies, which are listed in the agenda. And if anybody wants me to go through them, I will, but they're there for you to view.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole, I see that there's a list of 14 different reserve fund policies. And did you want to do any other introduction to the motion?
Other than that, we've just, as Ms Walker has mentioned earlier, this is just a change in the way we are gonna be handling policies and going through management rather than council.
Okay, thanks councillor O'Toole, councillor Bressi?
Thank you, sorry, I just wanna make sure I'm tracking, just because you said going through management, we're talking about the reserve policies here, right?
Yes, I believe we're working on the reserve.
I thought I might have missed something, my apologies. Just, I'm not gonna make a motion at this point, because I brought both these ideas up at committee, and even though I couldn't make a motion at committee, no motion got made there. So I'm not gonna make a motion at this point, I'm gonna throw out a few ideas and I'd be happy to make some motions if I sense there's some support on council. I'd be very excited to support some motions that might come out of this. But two thoughts I've had with this is, one with our financial stabilization reserve, there's a minimum floor on it, and I wonder if there might be some merit to making it a little bit more difficult for council to go below that floor. And a tool for that might be a special resolution being required to draw below the 5% operating things, that would require a two-thirds vote of council instead of a simple majority vote of council. And just thinking of that is, future councils, or us for that matter, I, this is the emergency fund, and I think it should be a very exceptional circumstance to draw your emergency fund too low. It shouldn't be for night staves, that should be only in the most dire of circumstances. It should be something that has to come with a lot of debate and a lot of public discourse if you're gonna draw it too low. And so making it a little bit harder for us to get through politically might be, might be a wise move. I'd point out that there might be concerns saying, while you're giving out power, that should be a simple majority, but future councils, if they are ever deadlocked and there was a simple majority that really wanted to change this, they'd have the ability to go with simple majority, actually change this policy and still hammer it through with just half plus one if they really wanted to. But it would take a little bit longer and be a little bit harder, and I think that might be, that might be a worthwhile mechanism to have on our emergency fund. So that's one thought I've had on this, my other thought on this is, in my mind, and maybe I just have a different view of it, but in my mind, that financial stabilization fund is, our emergency fund to deal with the unexpected. And I don't know if I love the winter stabilization fund being rolled into it. The reason for that is, in my mind, the winter stabilization fund isn't emergency funding, it's not unexpected funding. That exists because we know that our costs for snow removal are gonna fluctuate and we wanna use that account to modulate the impacts of that fluctuation of annual snowfall has on taxes and has on other programs. And for, in my mind, I'd love to have that outside of the emergency account, just so that, I think that one of the things that if we have a year of very high snowfall, there's already a lot of public skepticism, there's already a lot of public doubt in our ability to do it, no matter how well we deliver that services. I think if they hear, oh, and not only are they not keeping up with all the snows coming down, they're also pulling out the emergency fund, I think that undermines some public trust in us. On the other hand, I know last year when I got to go to the public and they heard, well, you're having troubles moving slow and you're going out of budget, over budget on it, where's that over budget spending gonna come from? When I was able to say, well, council has a fund specifically for these years of snowfall, people had a lot more comfort in that than I think they'd have with us drawing out the financial stabilization fund. So those are two thoughts on here, like I said, I'm not gonna make a motion at this point, but I'd be happy to if I sense I'm not the only one that's thinking out of one of these.
Okay, thanks councillor Bressi, councillor O'Toole.
Just like, just like to step back a little bit, I would like to actually approve council policy 346, the reserve fund policy, before we rescind the other ones.
Sure.
Please, do that in that order.
Yeah, sorry, thanks councillor O'Toole, I thought that that was the intent of the motion, so the motion is to actually approve the new policy, which will hold all these other ones. And then after that one is approved, then to remove all the other ones, so yeah, thanks very much, I'm sorry, I thought that, that's what I heard you say anyway.
Yeah, wow.
Thanks for the clarification, councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much Mayor Given, I'm not opposed to councillor Bressi's potential motions coming forward. I too was at committee meeting and I expressed a bit of discomfort without having a ceiling on the winter stabilization reserve, which right now it's pretty much maxed out, so that says that we're not putting any extra money in there and it limits that spending. One thing that I caution committee is, is that it's not our administration that we have to worry about, it's our council sometimes. And back in 2014, when we had a huge dump of snow, about three meters worth in about five and a half weeks, council was presented several options. One of them was to do the Cadillac service continuously, another one was to, like, just do windrows as what we did, and the other one was to try to create a hybrid system. Council ended up going on the windrow system, but depending on who's elected in the council of the day, I do think that poses a clear and present danger of, you know, the public coming on council and pressuring council to continue on with the Cadillac service when it may not be in the best interests of the community. And my concern is, is that would severely deplete the financial stabilization reserve. And I do like, as councillor Bressi stated earlier, that it is a standard and that we do budget for it and that we have money. do budget for it and that we have money set aside in the account. I can see administration's reasoning behind it, but if councillor Bressi is willing to make a motion, I could support it. On the special resolution, I wasn't warmed to it at the meeting. I thought it was an interesting idea, but I started thinking about it more, and I really liked the fact that administration, when they were tasked by the mayor's motion at committee to establish a certain minimum and create a tabling chart that also shows how we got that reserve, whether it's legislated through the MGA or whether it came from a special bylaw, I just sort of dipped into a bit of the revisions on the financial stabilization reserve. And although I like the fact that the total minimum that's recommended is no less than five percent of our annual operating costs, which is equivalent to about two months' worth of operating for the city, according to the government of Alberta, they recommend that our municipalities, regardless of size, maintain a balance in this reserve of no less than two months of regular operating revenues or expenditures. Now, looking at what administration has put forward through the committee report at least, that it was determined that the appropriate establishes the two months of operating recommendation as a maximum balance rather than as a minimum balance. So I do think that also poses a clear and present danger for whomever may be on council in the future to dip in a little more without having to think twice about it. And I think that special resolution alongside the minimum standard would help protect our reserves so that we don't just wantonly throw it away one day. So I can get behind your motions, councillor Bressi.
Thanks, councillor Heaton. To be clear, we don't have any motions yet, and so we do need to have somebody make a motion if they want to do that. And so fair enough to float an idea and see if anybody salutes, but we actually don't prejudge motions by seeing if people like them before we make them. So by all means, after our next speaker, I see councillor Bressi's our next speaker, then let's have a motion that we can discuss and debate. Councillor Bressi?
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to make a motion just as I brought up on committee. I didn't want to, I didn't want to belabor it if I was the only one thinking it.
So councillor O'Toole clarified that his intent was to bring forward a motion to bring in the new policy first. Councillor Bressi is discussing a amendment to the new policy.
Well, I'll start with, which one do I want to start with? I'll start with special resolution one. I would, I would move that we amend the policy to require a special resolution of council to draw the financial stabilization reserve below the recommended minimum reserve level.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor Bressi. So I think the motion is clear, a special resolution being two-thirds vote rather than a simple majority of council. So I think that's clear. Does anybody have any questions on the motion? I do have one, I guess, for administration, and this may be sort of a, how would management interpret this? So will this, after this, after tonight, assuming that council establishes the new policy three forty-six, will the financial stabilization reserve have a balance?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, it will, and it will just be over the minimum requirement.
Okay. And so if it was just over the minimum requirement, has management forecasted using the financial stabilization reserve at all in this term's budget?
No, it has not.
No, it has not, okay. And so to clarify, so after this motion, if council wished to use the financial stabilization reserve at any time during this term, would it require a two-thirds vote?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay, thanks very much. Any other discussion or debate, questions or comments? Councillor Bressi?
Thank you. My understanding is that that would be the case if council wanted to draw on it right now, depending on how much we want to draw on it, we need to do that. But we've also budgeted to put one point five million dollars into it next year. We're going to be deciding what to do with the twenty eighteen surplus. I think that's a likely place for that. So we'd be very constrained for a couple of months potentially with this, but I think pretty soon we'd have some extra money to, money, we'd have some extra money there. So I don't know if that would hold us the whole term, but definitely for the next couple of months if something came up.
Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion or debate? Questions or comments? Councillor Heaton?
Yeah, I guess councillor Bressi kind of closed there, but I'm in support of the motion. And in light of this motion, I probably wouldn't support any subsequent motions to change them as they are. I just think it puts in an extra layer of red tape and a bit of a security check to ensure that even on the heavy snowfall years, that council will still have that relative warning that'll tell them that, hey, we're getting a little low on these reserves. And our goal, I think, moving forward should be to build them up and to create future financial stability and security for our community. So I'm encouraging council to support this amendment to the motion. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Heaton. Councillor Platt?
Thanks, Mayor Given. So I'm just wanting to clarify, so this, the nine point six would not include winter stabilization, that would still be a separate amount? Or would that be part of the nine point six?
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I quoted the balance in the financial stabilization reserve at the last quarterly financial statement that has been submitted to council, which is nine point six million. And so should this policy be approved as it's been presented, the balance that currently exists in the winter stabilization reserve will also be transferred into the financial stabilization reserve.
And so just to, just clarify for me, because I haven't had a chance to see the way that that would go, so with the transfer of the winter stabilization reserve to the financial stabilization reserve, will that, is that what will bring us just above the minimum balance?
Thank you, Mayor Given, no. The balance of nine point six is what is, exists in the financial stabilization reserve today. Should council approve the motion that's been presented to approve the new policy, then there would be an additional, I believe about three million dollars transferred to the financial stabilization reserve.
Okay. And remind me again, what is the total, so the minimum balance, the five percent annual operating budget, what is, what would that number be?
It's approximately eight point four million.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Heaton?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a question for Ms. Walker. At committee, there was a few tables shown that sort of detailed where the transfers would go and what kind of money would be sitting in the accounts. You wouldn't happen to have that available for the general viewing public or for the members of council around the table right now?
Ms. Walker?
I do have it in hard copy, and I could put it on the screen.
Sure, yeah, if you'd like it, you can maybe take the presenter's table there, and we can use the overhead camera. Just make sure we're using all the technology tonight.
Thanks, Susan.
Set it on the X, X marks the spot in the middle of the desk there, and it will absolutely get it the wrong way up the first time, just like it does for every public delegation. That's the outstanding items list. Sorry, face guy.
This is the, is this the one you're talking about, Chris? This is the ten-year projection?
Not the ten-year projection. I know that was included. I encourage council or any member of the public to check it out because administration has put a lot of work into this. So this is sort of those numbers that, oh, it's maybe the other side around. There we go. All right, so as you can see, the financial stabilization reserve, thank you, Ms. Walker, is four up from the total line, is at nine point seven. The impacts from the policy revision are all in brackets, and then it would all just be added into the financial stabilization reserve at thirteen point eight seven three million dollars. And that would be our new outstanding, or not outstanding, amazing balance and growing. Let's call it that.
Thanks, Ms. Walker. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing nobody else ringing in, then we're on councillor Bressi's motion. Councillor Bressi, did you wish to close on your amendment? No? Okay. So councillor Bressi's motion was to amend policy three forty-six, and I imagine that would be Schedule A in three forty-six to identify that there's an additional sort of line identifying that there is a requirement for a two-thirds majority vote on council, or special resolution of council with two-thirds majority. Sure, councillor Bressi?
And also, just in case I, just in case I got lost in my first flow of thoughts, just to point out that a simple majority of council could still draw below this if they wanted to. It just require revising this policy, which a simple majority can do. So this doesn't necessarily constrain the majority plus one, just makes it a little bit more difficult for them.
Okay, thanks, councillor Bressi. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so if we're all clear of the effect of councillor Bressi's amendment motion, I'm seeing that we are, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. We are still, so we're on councillor O'Toole's motion as amended. Were there any other follow-up items? Councillor Bressi?
Well, maybe I shouldn't push my luck, but I am going to push my luck, and I'm going to try another motion on winter stabilization. That being said, I'm kind of curious how you'd like me to handle this, Mayor Given, in terms of if I wanted to make an amendment to have essentially something added into the schedule, I'd be, I'd be happy to try a motion that would form all of these brackets in it, but at the same time, do you want me to do that, or would it be best for it to go away and come back to us? Or just, the last one was easy because it was one line in. This one, if it's essentially establishing another reserve fund that's not within this policy right now, so it's a little bit longer, it's a little bit longer, and I'm just kind of looking for direction on how you'd love, how you would suggest I handle that through a motion.
If you haven't consulted with administration ahead of time on what an appropriate approach to developing sort of your intent is, then I would suggest that it would be wise to send it back to administration. Council can vote on whether or not they want to do that and basically send the policy back to have an adjustment made.
Great. Well, in that case, I will, and so we've never quite had, we've never quite had something like that, so would the wording of the motion be to postpone this until administration can bring back potential amendments, or would be wording of a motion that would have that?
I need to think about that. So we are, we are hoping to direct administration. You know, I think that this would be a tabling motion, and there'd be a follow-up motion asking administration to bring back potential revisions like you're imagining. So one would be to table consideration and voting on councillor O'Toole's motion to approve the new policy until such time as management can bring forward revisions like you're set to describe. And then at that time, council could consider those revisions and the overall policy.
Great. I think I'm going to make a motion to postpone instead of table, because if I make a motion to table, that means no debate, debate is permissible, and I feel that debate would be a good, would be a good thing for this. So I am going to move that we postpone this discussion until the March twenty, until the, I'm kind of looking at administration, what do you guys, you guys know if this postponement passes, what I'm going to be asking next? Would you like four weeks, six weeks, longer? I'm kind of looking at administration of how long I should potentially postpone this for.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We could have an adjustment made for the next committee meeting, not tomorrow's committee meeting, but the following one.
Great. So then I would move that we postpone this until the, until the March eleventh meeting.
Okay, okay, thanks very much. So a motion to postpone, and that would be postpone consideration of the new policy as proposed in order to allow management to bring forward recommendations to support a concept that councillor Bressi is going to make a follow-up motion on. And I would suggest that if the postponement passes, then we also wouldn't be removing the other reserve policies until we, until that time as well, right? So basically, we'd be setting this issue aside and reconsidering it at that council meeting as described by councillor Bressi. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I find it a little bit difficult in the process to decide if I want to postpone this based on not knowing what the follow-up motion consists of. So I'm curious if we can have some discussion on what the follow-up motion consists of. I mean, at this point, I'm voting blind.
I would encourage councillor Bressi to make his case on why we should postpone this, and I think a part of that is the intent of what he's hoping to accomplish. I think that that would be probably worthwhile.
So my apologies, kind of uncharted territory for me having a discussion like this at council instead of at a committee meeting, so my apologies. So the reason I only made a motion to postpone is because I did, I don't know if a motion with kind of two separate actions, and it is permissible or not, but let me try a more fulsome motion. If you ruled me out of order, then I'll, you have to stop.
Sure.
So how about could my motion be to postpone this until, until the March eleventh meeting and further direct administration to bring back to the appropriate standing committee proposed revision to this policy that would create a winter stabilization fund within Schedule A?
And just to clarify, what you just said was to bring back those revisions to the appropriate standing committee. Do you mean it to go to the standing committee and then to council, or do you mean it to come back to council with the overall policy?
I think, I mean to have it come back to the standing committee, just if, if we're going to do, talk about this again at council, I'd rather that be the last time we talk about this at council. So yeah, I think to the appropriate standing committee and then coming back to council ultimately.
Okay, okay. So council, is that clear about councillor Bressi's intent? Okay, I do see others in the queue, and so with that clarification of intent and sort of recognizing that it's those two pieces, we're asking, the effect of councillor Bressi's motion would be to postpone consideration of these items and to direct administration to bring back a description of a winter stabilization reserve amendment to Schedule A. So basically adding in a specifically defined winter stabilization reserve. Councillor Platt?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this. I think it's good to keep the winter stabilization reserve separate personally. I guess my question for administration, and maybe it's something they can just bring when we do it through, is what's the proper amount? I mean, you know, if it's not being used, I don't want to see a bunch of money sitting there. I like the idea of having some money there. So if it's maybe part of the presentation that comes back of, we feel two million dollars is the right amount, or two and a half, or one point five, I think some clarification on that would be good for me as well. I don't leave money sitting there if we don't need to leave it center. I do like the idea of having it's a special reserve for that that doesn't go into our financial stabilization reserve. So I, thanks councillor Bressi for the thought put into that, so I will be supporting that.
Thanks, councillor Platt. Councillor Heaton?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I know I brought this up and I really rattled the chains at committee, but I'm not going to support this motion. And a big reason why is as I was rattling the chains, I realized that we are looking to make a pretty significant change, like as far as how we deal with our reserve policies and bring it more in line with what other municipalities are doing as well. I don't see it as an overall general account, but I might be able to answer councillor Plaatz's question on what the right amount is. The old amount of the reserve policy would carry a minimum twenty-five percent of the snow and removal and ice control operating budget and accumulate to a maximum of fifty percent under the old policy, the one that is being proposed to be rescinded. Through the report of administration, they clearly detailed that they haven't dipped into the winter stabilization reserve, except in that crazy two thousand fourteen year where they dipped into it for about one point five million dollars. And other than that, they haven't really touched base with it. Our administrative team is doing priority-based budgeting and has very robust scheduling, and there is a, there is a context of history here that I think can be applied to any recommendations that management might make to council. I'm really happy with the special resolution that councillor Bressi offered to council as sort of another check and balance. With that in place, I don't feel overly concerned about needing the ceiling of the winter stabilization fund, and I think that administration will detail their budgets and they'll work accordingly. And if we do have a crazy snowfall year, I'm not worried that we're going to dip into our reserves to the point where it's out of control, because we do have things on our side, such as history and this new special resolution as well to keep our financial stabilization reserve, I say that a couple of times fast, still up and running and growing. So I appreciate the motion because I know it came from a discussion that we carried at committee, but here today, I will not be supporting it. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor Heaton. Councillor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question for clarification. Would we not accomplish the same thing that councillor Bressi is after by simply... Would we not accomplish the same thing that, uh, Counselor Ressey is after by simply striking the removal of the winter stabilization reserve from the, from the motion to rescind policies?
Look to management to see if they'd interpret that the same way. Um, seeing Ms. Walker?
Um, thank you, Mayor Given. So what we have done is structured an entirely different reserve policy, um, that, um, includes a schedule that outlines each one of the separate reserves. So, um, what in effect would happen there by just striking it off the rescind list, uh, would be that there would be two separate reserve policies. So there would be one, uh, for the winter stabilization reserve, and there would be another policy for everything else. And so, um, management for, um, ease of administration would prefer that, um, if, uh, council so chooses to, uh, reestablish the winter stabilization reserve, that we incorporate it in the new policy format, if that's all right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, I see Counselor O'Toole's in the queue. I'll, I'll just enter to say that, that I, uh, won't support the motion. I appreciate the intent, um, and in my estimation, um, it is more around perception, uh, than actual functionality. Um, when I read Schedule A, um, and the description of the financial stabilization reserve and its intended purpose, it's described as being there to provide funds to stabilize tax rates and protect against fluctuating revenues and expenditures by providing funds for emergent one-time expenses or losses of revenue. And so, um, I think a year where there is excessive snow removal, and we have higher-than-expected expenditures are clearly expected to, like that, that, that purpose describes exactly that situation. We had to spend more than we thought because we had a lot more snow than anyone might have predicted. And so, um, I think the financial stabilization reserve, as, as described currently in Schedule A and the new proposed policy, does exact, is, is intended to, to fulfill that function, uh, where we say, jeez, we have a whole bunch of snow, we're gonna need to do something about that. We're gonna need some extra money, where should that come from? We have a reserve for it. Um, I think the funk, the, the, the benefit of Councilor Ressey's motion is that it clearly identifies to the public and communicates to them that we're setting aside a special amount of money that's only to be used for, for winter stabilization and snow removal, and I think that that's good and, and laudable, but functionally, I don't think it does, um, does, uh, significant improvement over what's contained in the policy here, and, uh, potentially, and, and if I'm maybe mischaracterizing this or misunderstanding it, um, it does potentially mean that we have, um, sequestered funds in an area that's only accessible for snow removal, uh, not, not other things. And so I think the intent that management has, of the changes management is bringing forward, is to centralize the majority of the city's reserve funds in one relatively flexible area that we can use in a number of different situations. It just doesn't happen to say "snow," which is unfortunate from an optics basis, maybe, um, but functionally, I have every confidence that the schedule as proposed can do what we need it to do. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I won't be supporting this. Uh, last year, we had a, a retreat. We discussed that we wanted some changes in, in some of our programs and places where we thought that we needed to have some changes. We sent management to come out and make those changes, and here we're now second-guessing those changes. Um, this is not the first time there's been doubt, and I really feel that this management team, the finance department, the CLT, has a good understanding what they wanna do, and I'm gonna support them in this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. I see Counselor Clayton, and then Counselor Platt. Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess more of a question for administration, maybe for, um, Ms. Walker, I'm not really sure who it's best for. Um, on a high level, I appreciate the intent of Counselor Ressey. Um, my question or my scenario is more of a, um, an, an actual scenario in the sense that, um, we have a hundred-year snowfall, and we have, uh, a major facility in our community that has some disaster happen to it that, for some reason, we're not covered through insurance, and we have taxes through the roof, and without identifying, you're leaving the, um, the decisions to clear the roads versus doing, uh, stabilizing taxes and expenses to council with a two-thirds majority, and I, I just think that at some point, um, identified money within reason is, is, uh, probably more responsible. So I, I guess my question for Ms. Walker is, um, am I right in thinking that if there was this whole financial scenario, two-thirds of a vote, council's left to choose buckets? Okay, yeah, clear, don't clear the roads, but fix this and, and stabilize the taxes, and, and you're pitting one off against the, the other, am I correct?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. So, um, if, in a scenario like that where it was, um, disaster everywhere, uh, I believe that it would be management's responsibility to come forward with appropriate recommendations to mitigate the risk of any one of those items that you listed. And so that is, um, I believe, my job to, to bring that forward to you. Um, should, uh, the financial stabilization reserve at that time be at its minimum level, um, then, and it was part of the recommendation, um, to rectify those issues, um, then yes, it would require two-thirds of council, uh, to vote. Thanks.
See Counselor Palat?
Um, thanks, Mayor Given. I guess my, my question's also for Director Walker, and it's maybe we're just kinda going back to the, uh, the intent, and then, uh, Counselor O'Toole had mentioned, you know, we did ask you guys to test, you know, try to find, uh, some, some efficiencies, and I'm assuming by having one fund, it's gonna be a lot easier for us to manage one fund than, than the multiple funds, but I'm more concerned, or my question's more around, will it give us a better chance for investment opportunities if we have one fund that we can rotate through versus a lot of other funds?
Director Walker?
Um, thank you, Mayor Given. So, um, our investment pool is made up of a total of the reserve funds that we have in place, and any other surplus revenues that we have for a short period of time. So we have both long-term and short-term investments, and we would look at those, um, as individual, um, uh, bodies of money. They're not invested separately as separate reserves. Um, the logic behind, uh, eliminating the winter stabilization reserve and establishing it as part of the financial stabilization reserve is essentially because it's a stabilization reserve. And, um, the, um, the idea that there would be reserves, uh, in each area or for each purpose, um, was something that we were trying to move away from, um, in that really there is only one financial stabilization, or really there is only one purpose of a financial stabilization reserve, and it ought to be viewed in light of all of the needs, um, of the community and the organization as a whole. So partitioning it up into little segments, um, does not, um, limit council's ability to utilize those funds for any purpose that it so chose anyway. Um, so that was the logic.
Okay, no, it makes sense, and I think for me, I'm struggling, and I think, uh, Mayor Given said the word, I think optically, I like it better if we had them separated, but I think on a management perspective, and, and on overall, it achieves the same thing, so, um, I'm actually gonna say I'm not gonna support the motion, because I think that the intent is, is covered by what's, what's happening here, so.
Thanks, Counselor Platt. Um, I would just offer that, um, if council chooses not to postpone, um, then, uh, and there was still a concern that, uh, we wanted to ensure that the community was aware that we have the flexibility within our reserve funds to manage extreme winter weather events. Um, another potential way to achieve that might be just to rename the reserve. Uh, right now, it's called the Financial Stabilization Reserve as proposed by management. Um, less technical than getting management to describe an entirely new reserve and hive off money might be to call it the Financial and Winter Stabilization Reserve, by simply omitting the name. Uh, I'd just offer that if, if this motion doesn't pass. Counselor Thiessen?
Wow, that sounds something similar, like I was gonna say, but that was just off the cuff. Obviously, the mayor flies off the cuff sometimes, too. Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I just wanna throw in a little extra added, uh, food for thought, uh, that in those heavy snowfall years, we will be depleting, uh, winter stabilization reserve, as we would be the financial stabilization reserves. The, the difference comes, uh, when we do our next budget, and then we go, oh, well, we drained one and a half million dollars out of that fund, so we gotta top it back up, maybe we give it a million, uh, and the financial stabilization a million, whereas we might, you know, otherwise not take that extra revenue and figure that we gotta partition it out, and one for one purpose, and the rest for the whole purpose of, of our organization. So I like the mayor's off-the-cuff comment, a financial and winter stabilization reserve. Um, I'm okay with it just being a financial stabilization reserve and, uh, and to be used accordingly when it is needed, so. Sorry, Counselor Ressey, I know I was with you at committee, but, uh, I'm against you today.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen, for those comments. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and so we'll go to Counselor Ressey to close.
Great, well, thank, first, I just wanna thank the room for patience with me as I figured out the motion, so that we can figure out a way to have this conversation, so thank you again for that. It's interesting, I think that Counselor O'Toole talked me into voting against my own motion, and now Counselor Thiessen might have talked me back in, back into it. Uh, one, one thought that, one thought that I have is, well, two thoughts, I think I'd go back to the purposes of this reserve, is emergent one-time expenses. In my mind, we know that every few years, we're gonna go over budget or snow removal, almost certainly. That's kinda the nature of living in northern Canada, where we don't have predictable snowfall, and I think, and i- in the past, we haven't had, my understanding is that part of the reason we haven't had to draw from the winter stabilization reserve in the past is because we had surpluses to draw from, is my understanding, and we've heard that we're not, that we're, as we're budgeting lean, we're not gonna have that same, we're not gonna have that same luxury necessarily in future, in future years. I think one of the reasons that, one of the reasons from a governance perspective, that's not just optical why this might be valuable, is it's a good reminder, if, if we've got a pool of 20 million dollars, and we draw 1 million dollars from it 'cause the, 'cause we have a bad snowfall, I don't think there's the same pressure to put that 1 million dollars back into this big, large pool that's, that's functioning, stabilize the whole city. On the other hand, if we've got a winter stabilization fund, and we, and we deplete it with one year of heavy snowfall, then there's a lot of pressure to get it back up quickly so that we know that there's money there in a couple years where it snows, where it snows again, so, uh, that might be a reason to think about having a separate fund for winter stabilization.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Ressey. Uh, so Counselor Ressey's motion to postpone to March 11th, I think it was, Counselor Ressey, um, and to ask administration to present an amendment, uh, with respect to establishing a separate winter stabilization reserve, um, shed, for Schedule A, uh, at the appropriate standing committee. Um, so we're all, I think, clear on that motion, I just wanna look around and make eye contact with everybody, make sure that we're all clear on the effect of Counselor Ressey's motion. Okay, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. And that motion does not carry. Um, are there, so we are, uh, back to Counselor O'Toole's motion as amended, um, in the first time to add that two-thirds, uh, requirement on the financial stabilization reserve. Are there, is there anything else before we call for the vote on Counselor O'Toole's motion? I see none, then we will call for the vote on Counselor O'Toole's motion to establish Policy 346 as amended. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, I just got a little something here from the rest of the meeting. Uh, we have corporate services.
Sorry, Counselor O'Toole, I, I think what we did is we established the new policy. We still have to do that second bit.
Rescind that.
That has all, that, that, yeah, rescinding all the other ones.
Okay, I am sorry. Uh, I move that council rescind the, the following policies that are listed in the agenda.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, and that is the, uh, the 14 different sort of pre-existing policies, which now would all be covered and rolled up under Policy 346 that we just approved. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
All right, back on cue again. It was a little confusing there the last 40 minutes. Okay, uh, Ms. Walker gave a service area verbal report, and assessment and taxation notices of assessment have been mailed out earlier this month, and will be open to appeal until April 5th, and assessors will be handing, handling any inquiries regarding the new assessments over the next two months. Under the corporate facility management, staff are preparing for the spring, possibly summer demolition of the old school board building, as well as some minor renovations to the, uh, CSD building, uh, which will include some flooring and painting. We also have, uh, staff has started to do working on the process for the loan consolidation and refinancing, and are continuing to work on a year-end process. Uh, work has commenced on the initial phase of the recreational management system software implementation project. That's a lot of syllables there, a short, so. Um, other than that, information technology services staff have prepared, uh, some, uh, stuff to be sold on gov deals, and, uh, just procurement, procurement reviews are expected to be completed by year, uh, by the end of March, with a view to replace our self-pay program with purchase cards. The 2018 total revenue from gov de- deals surplus sales was 82,300 dollars, and the total procurement for 2018 stats have been compiled, and a total of 118 competitive bids were issued, with a total award value of 36,592,000 dollars. That's what corporate services did. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Um, we'll move on to the Arts Development Committee meeting from February 6th. Counselor Blackburn, I think that was your set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, yes, the Arts Development Committee met, um, this past week, and, um, we're very happy to support a number of organizations, um, through, uh, through, uh, grant funding. Uh, we dealt with, uh, a major project funding request, uh, for 3,000 dollars for the Edmonton Ballet Project Workshop, which, uh, um, which we, we supported in full. And, um, we also made grants totaling nearly 57,000 dollars to cover, um, 11, um, uh, fun, uh, festival, uh, funding requests, um, quite a variety of them actually, uh, supporting a, a good number of, of people, um, across many interests within Grand Prairie, and I won't go into the details at this point. Uh, I believe, uh, all of those details have actually already shown up in the Daily Herald Tribune. Um, the, the other thing that happened at that meeting was that we, uh, made two amendments to the Terms of Reference document for the, um, um, for the various funds that are dealt with, uh, in that we identified some restrictions to the amount of money that would be granted, um, uh, in the scholarship funding and in the individual project funding, uh, the purpose being, one, to ensure that we're able to distribute to a wider, um, um, cross-section of applicants, and also to make applicants more aware that, um, uh, some requests for larger sums of money simply, uh, we, we, we can't entertain for, uh, for the simple reason that, uh, these funds are in such high demand. So we made a couple of changes, and those people who are interested in making applications in the future will, uh, will be able to look up that information and, uh, and apply it as they need to. The one other thing I will mention about the funding for, um, festivals is that it's a, a 70,000 dollar fund each year, and so we have, uh, a little over 13,000 dollars left that we might grant to applications that we receive, uh, by the deadline, uh, in the fall, which I believe is at the end of September. And, uh, that was the, uh, the total of our business for the Arts Development Committee.
Yeah, thanks very much, uh, Counselor Blackburn. Did you make a motion or receive that set of minutes?
Sorry?
Did you make a motion or receive that set of minutes?
Uh, yes, I would make a motion that we accept the minutes of, of the Arts Development Committee meeting held February 6th.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Thank you. And that motion carries, and I believe that that handles all of our committee business for this evening. I don't believe we have any items of correspondence, and of course, we did have our one delegation, though, with Mr. Durnford's concern around snow removal on a pedestrian link. And I see Counselor Bressi's in the queue. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we ask administration to provide a verbal report of this to the appropriate standing committee. And just to speak this, I think it's appropriate that we make sure this lands on a committee agenda somewhere. At the same time, I don't think that this needs the resources that go into a written report and the weeks and the hours of time that that takes. So the verbal's a very key word in this.
Okay, thanks very much. I just see our Director of Community Living, Mr. Miller.
Sorry, Director Miller, not, there you go. Now you're on.
Wait, thank you, Mayor Given. So in listening to the delegation tonight, I've sent an email to a couple of different departments, trying to figure out which department actually looks after the path. It's either transportation or parks. And I'm hopeful to actually have the information for tomorrow morning for the Community Living Committee.
Great. That would be a great spot for that verbal report. Thanks, thanks very much, Director Miller, for following up, and Counselor Bressi, for your motion. Is there any discussion or debate on Counselor Bressi's motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I don't believe we had any notices of motion, and so we'll go to council member reports. I don't believe there are any reports from our external agencies, boards, or commissions that council let me know ahead of time. And so then maybe we would just move to council roundtable, and we'll start with Counselor Thiessen.
I'm so lucky today. I get to start out the roundtable. That's awesome. Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a few things I wanted to touch based on, of course, it was the end of Literacy Week last week, so I managed to find my way into about four more schools, which is always great, reading the kids of all ages. But on the last day of reading, I did happen to take in the Grand Prairie Construction Association AGM. It's always good to get in the same room with some of our builders. I know we're starting to do that a little bit more. But there are several presentations from industry as well as from the province, and our very own Counselor Bressi stepped in and gave a presentation to the Construction Association, the AGM, describing what Grand Prairie's doing to support the construction industry and how we're trying to cut red tape and make projects happen a lot faster. I think he did an admirable job with Counselor O'Toole and Plank Ossle in the house to witness that. So good job, Counselor Bressi. Then on February 6th, I had the honor of getting to sit beside Ms. Susan Thompson, one of our George Repka Award winners, at our volunteer recognition event, and see her win that award for practically a lifetime of service, largely to kids and mostly to our community. She's an incredible little ball of energy that just never stops going, and I think she's busier now that she's retired from teaching and principaling and putting in time and a half as a volunteer for a variety of causes. So it was really good to see a good person get rewarded and through the process that the city does. I will tip of the hat to Willie Braun, who wasn't able to make the event, and also a tip of the hat to Bandage Paws, our Organization of the Year, through the Bill Bowes Award. So it was an excellent event to be a part of. Counselor Clyde Blackburn stepped in for the mayor on that one as well, and himself did an admirable job of keeping all of our volunteers entertained and at least attentive to why we all were there and being such a gracious host. So thank you very much, Counselor Blackburn. Finally, since I am talking about Counselor Blackburn, I'd just like to offer my congratulations. I know you weren't here at our last council meeting. You were busy working on a production called Mamma Mia. Not just any production, it is currently the highest-attended theater event in the history of Grand Prairie, with attendance records, and is completely sold out. So, and that's after adding another show. So I know to my council colleague, Clyde Blackburn, I know you did a big part of it. My former council colleague, Rory Tarrant, is also working behind the scenes in producing that and directing it as well. Thank you, Counselor Blackburn. So huge kudos to all the cast and crew involved, and big congratulations, not only to you, Mr. Blackburn, but also to the Grand Prairie Live Theater for putting out quality shows for our community. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, and Counselor Thiessen, I appreciate your comments and stealing my thunder. Actually, the only thing that I will highlight at this point is that I attended a presentation by the Alzheimer Society to the knitting club at Prairie Lake Home the other day, and it was really an interesting presentation. It was an opportunity for the Alzheimer Society to explain to people who may best take advantage of their services exactly what those services are and the kinds of things that they cover. And the other thing that was very interesting about it is that Alice Brick, who is a senior member of our community, who has contributed very much so to our community over the many years, has been producing these muffs, which I don't know that I can adequately describe, but they're a tactile and a visual sensation in that you can put your hands inside these muffs, and not only would they keep your hands warm, but there are things to touch and feel and rub both inside the muff and outside, which apparently is a calming action for those people who may be distressed or whose minds may be wandering and needing of a little bit of comfort. And she had, every single one of them was different, and she had a couple of dozen of them there, and she keeps making them. So it was very interesting to be able to see those and actually try one on. Not that I really needed it, but it was a great presentation, and I really do appreciate the contributions that the Alzheimer Society makes to those seniors in need of their services.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Platt?
Thank you. A couple of events I want to highlight. I missed last council meeting. I was away to ICSE in Wester for an international conference for shopping centers. Easy one to say. And I want to throw a shout-out to Rebecca Lee, who did a presentation earlier, and Lauren, who did a great job presenting the city of Grand Prairie. Very good booth. I was really impressed. We got to see the promotional videos live there, and it was well-received, and I thought they did a very good job, and the booth was busy, so it was good. Fun event, lots of positive things, maybe cautiously optimistic is a better word, but positive things for area. The other event that was a lot of fun, on a different note, was last Saturday, was going to the municipal county-city curling bonds deal with Counselor Thiessen, Counselor O'Toole, and Counselor Bressi had stopped in as well. It was just fun to see, again, that we, you know, our administrations do work well together. There was a lot of people on both sides of the trenches, so to speak, that were in the curling bonds deal, having fun, dipping a few pops. And so it was a lot of fun, and it was a good event and something I look forward to doing again. Still not a good curler. The humbling part was my wife's team beat me in the last game, so that was disappointing. But anyways, it was a good event overall. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Platt. Counselor Clayton?
I also attended the ICSE Economic Development Conference that Counselor Platt referenced, and it was a great opportunity to have conversations with different sectors, everybody from home builders and developers to actual retailers and shopping center conglomerates, per se, and to discuss the needs in Grand Prairie and on the other side of the conversation to see sort of, to hear what they're looking for. So that was a good conference. I also had an opportunity to represent the city at the Northern Alberta Elected Leaders' Meeting in St. Isidore. So it was a good conversation, and as always, that group has varying types of conversations as it represents a very vast group of municipalities in northern Alberta, and each with different concerns, and good to get together to sort of hear what each other is working on. As I was in that last council meeting, I have a couple of other things I'll talk about that possibly were already announced, but I attended the Big Brothers Big Sisters event, and kudos to those organizers. It's once again a well-organized, well-run event, well-attended, and I haven't heard what their numbers were, but it was a sold-out event, so I think they probably did very well for that organization. And last but not least, I had an opportunity to read at the Parkside Montessori School during Literacy Week, and as always, it was a great pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I've got a number of items that I'll just speak on behalf of. This last weekend in Calgary, there was the Alberta Special Olympics, and I was asked by Alberta Goodwill here in Grand Prairie to help send off a couple of athletes that are employed with the Goodwill store here in Grand Prairie. So Steve Granjambe was in bowling, and his goal was to not get any gutter balls and get nothing but strikes. I don't know how that turned out for him. And Chris McKee, some, these are a couple of young fellows that I've known for a few years. He was competing in floor hockey. And there was a lot of other people from Grand Prairie that went down to Special Olympics, but these are the two from Goodwill. I also want to make mention that today was a memorable day for the citizens of Grand Prairie. The York Hotel site was about ten years ago. It was just shortly after I got elected in 2010 that the York Hotel site went down, and Tomroyd Apartment Building sod turning took place today. So takes a little while, but it's going to be a unique building. There's going to be apartments, and so residential as well as commercial. And I asked when they were going to get started, and they started today, and they're going to have the concrete poured by the time it starts warming up. And, yeah, so it looks like they're ready to go at her. So with that, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Well, I'll highlight a couple of things. All, this last weekend was really great for me. It was a weekend filled with drama, where Saturday night, I got to go to the Camp Wapiti fundraiser. That's a camp about fifteen minutes south of the city that has about, last year, they had three hundred and twenty kids show up at their camp, and they did an inter-theater experience, and it was awesome. I did not correctly guess who was the person that murdered a few of the guests, but I had an entertaining evening nonetheless. And then I got to go to Mamma Mia the next day, which was just a fantastic show, except for I'm really annoyed that I can't stop singing Super Trooper ever since being there. So that was a great weekend for me. The thing I'll highlight is, last week, there was a Police Act Review meeting on restorative justice, and I wasn't going to go to it, so I was thinking, well, restorative justice, I don't know how much municipal application that has. But then I had to be going to the, I had to be going to Calgary for the Inner City Forum on Social Policy Anyways, and I decided if I'm going to Calgary anyways, I may as well tack on this other meeting. But then the Inner City Forum got canceled at the last minute, so I was kind of upset that I was going to Calgary for a meeting that I didn't know if it would be that relevant to me. And then it turned out to be, from a personal perspective, the best of those meetings I've gone to so far. And it seems to me, my understanding is, that we seem to be pretty far behind a lot of the province when it comes to restorative justice, is at least the understanding I got from talking to some of the provincial folks and some of the academics that were there. And that's something that I want to learn more, see if the perception I got from that meeting is the reality, and try to figure out what is the municipal government's role in that. And I honestly don't know, but that's definitely something I've got stuck in my teeth right now, but I look forward to chatting with you, a few of you about, especially those that know more than I do, to learn what's actually going on in our community and what maybe could be going on in our community.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. I wanted to speak to one item that Counselor O'Toole mentioned, just because it is such a big deal, the sod turning or very frozen ground slash mud turning that we did for the Tormide Towers, the first building of three phases. I think the intent, as described by the builders, would be that the second building would start about this time next year, after they're sort of further along with this first building. The first building has eighteen units of residential suites on three floors, one and two-bedroom apartment units with elevator access, and it's great to see that kind of opportunity for living in the city's core coming onto market. The second building was about the same, and then more again in the third. And so, you know, the vision of way back when, when the city bought the York Hotel, was to see redevelopment happen on that site, and that was a long road to get here to today, and it still will be a longer road as they go through construction and start up at that building. But ultimately, it looks like we're on a path now to see, you know, a new five-million-dollar building erected on that site and residential dwelling units, eighteen residential dwelling units, which will add to live-work options downtown, opportunities for people to live and recreate and shop and everything great in their neighborhood, and I think that that's really great. So it was very exciting to see, so I wouldn't let that pass without a chance to sort of highlight it as well. But I did want to point out a couple of other events that I attended on behalf of the city, not last week, but the week before. I attended first in Cochrane at a regular meeting of the Midsize City Mayors and CAOs Caucus. This was a special meeting held in Cochrane. We had invited the leaders of the four provincial political parties to attend, and each of them did, so we had a separate session with each of the leaders to, where we put four questions forward to them all in advance so that they would have some, you know, some common ground to speak to. Certainly appreciated the commitment of each of the leaders to discussing relevant issues with mid-sized cities on an ongoing basis. It really was an intent, the intent was to open up a dialogue with them, but also to establish mid-sized cities as a relevant and important voice for affairs affecting the province. And I think the fact that we were able to draw each of the four leaders of the political parties to give up an hour of their time and come out to Cochrane, I think it really speaks to a testament to the potential influence of that group of assembled mid-sized cities. We in our group, I guess, have been talking about it quite often, but we might not have shared it with council. You know, that group is comprised of Alberta's fifteen largest towns and cities, excluding Edmonton and Calgary, because they're big enough to go out on their own. But those, in those twenty-two municipalities, we represent thirty-four provincial constituencies and nearly a million people. And when you put it in that context, especially heading into a provincial election, mid-sized cities are a force to be reckoned with and an organization and group that should not go unnoticed on the radar of any provincial leader. And so it was great to see that they would all turn up for that. Later on that week, I had an opportunity to head to Edmonton to attend a regular Municipal Governance Committee meeting for a part of my AUMA responsibilities. I had to cut that short because we received an invitation, I was invited to attend a meeting of senators that was being hosted in Edmonton, and so myself and AUMA President Barry Morashita from Brooks attended to meet with senators Labakan Benson and Simons, as well as the Chief of Staff for Alberta Senator Doug Black and Senator Elaine McCoy, who was on the phone, conference called in. And we were there to discuss Bill C-69 and the Standing Committee on Environment and Energy that is going to be reviewing Bill C-69 in the Senate. We were there to make the case that municipal leaders are an important voice to speak on behalf of communities and to speak about the potential impacts on municipalities and on communities of Bill C-69 as written. It was a very worthwhile dialogue. We certainly appreciated the opportunity to have an open and frank discussion with those members of the Senate Committee. And I was gratified to see shortly after that, when the committee resumed its business, they did pass a motion to take the committee on the road. I think they haven't yet determined where they're going to be holding their hearings, but there was some discussion prior that they would perhaps only occur in Ottawa and that they would bring in anybody that wished to present. We certainly made the case that the decisions affecting Canadians need to be made across, with the input of Canadians and hearing directly from them, and then that was best done by taking that Senate Committee out on the road. And they did follow up in the end with a motion that was passed at the committee to do so. I don't think they've established the timing of that or what will happen, but we can expect that AUMA, on behalf of Alberta municipalities, will be leading the charge. I expect that we'll see some invitations coming to our council to join in that effort as it comes forward, but I just wanted to keep council apprised and updated on that meeting, which I thought was important and relevant to our community. And with that, I will call our meeting adjourned.